UBSetter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
So they took the first five spots. We had a freshman girl in Taylor Rugarello who got fourth in the 400 in a PR. Jasmine Johanne, the freshman, placed fifth overall in the shot put. And those are some of the highlights on the girls' side. And our varsity boys also were third overall in the 4x800. From league, then we go on to Division II Championships. And our qualifiers this year were Autumn Bonds, Taylor Nelson, Aprilang Riano, Emma Tiara, Navia Brown, Jasmine Johanne, Taylor Rugarello. And on the boys, it was Eddie Jensen, Marshall Jensen, Heather Gorda, Jose Colazo, Renee Garcia, and Michael Malangi. Some of the highlights for Division II Championships was our girls' 4x8 were first place in all the D2 in a school record of 958. They were ranked number one in Division II all year long with Taylor Nelson, Emma Tiara, Aprilang Riano, and Navia Brown. And two of those were freshmen, one was a sophomore, and one was a senior. So that we were returning most of the whole team that broke the school record and were returning as the favorites next year on the 4x8. Taylor Rugarello placed 10th in 102 for the girls in the 4x8, in the 400, but also in the individual events. And the girls, our varsity girls, who went first, third, and fifth. So they took the first three spots in 522 in the mile, 523 in 524. And they came back and doubled back in the 3200 with their girls in the two mile. Navia Brown, Aprilang Riano, and Emma, where they went 1132, 1141, 1142 for third, fourth, and fifth. And Taylor Nelson was seventh in 1152, and Autumn Bond was 10th in 1206. We also had a girl freshman who was fifth at conference. So to move on to Masters, you have to get top six with the four other divisions. And she had her best PR and ended up getting sixth overall. So in league, our girls placed fifth overall. But in Division II, they actually scored 41 points to get fourth overall on D2. So they made huge leaps and bounds. Also, on the varsity boys, and our boys placed fourth place to move on to Masters in the 4x8 with Renee Garcia, Jose Colazo, Marshall Jensen, and Eddie Jensen. And to move on to Masters, we also had an outstanding individual who decided to do a crazy triple, which is 400, 200, and the 100 in Michael Malangi, and he ran 5117. The sixth in the sprint, ran the 100 in 1106, and the 200 in 2207, and moved on in the 100 and the 200 in to Masters. And lastly, we had a freshman, who was the first freshman in the 3200, fourth overall, and he placed 11th for 1022. He was the first freshman finisher. Next on from there, we have the Masters meet, where our girls were ranked ninth coming in and finished seventh overall, which is all Division I, II, III, IV, V combined. And they were seventh overall with Taylor Nelson, Emma Tiara, April, and Navia. Next, we had the 100 prelims, where Michael Malangi broke the school record in a time of 1078 for third in his heat and 10th overall. Really fast year this year for the sprints. And he really wanted to break that school record. And on his last pants, he was very successful in doing that and get an outstanding year. And he doubled back and ran the 200 as well and placed 11th overall in 2254 to finish out a senior year. We also had three distance runners that moved on in the 16 at Masters. They were ranked like 18th, 19th, and 22nd going into it, but they ended up going 12th, 14th, and 16th. Navia Brown ran 12th in 51705, which is second all-time for the school. Aprilang Riano ran 14th, 52117 for fourth all-time. And Emma Tiara was 16th, at 52274 for fifth all-time. And again, Michael broke the school record in the 100, but he's also second in the 200 with his 2207. And he also did break the 400 school record, 51117. Last event was the 3200 meter for our girls. And we had three that ran, and Navia Brown went 11th, which was 1110 for second all-time for our school record. Aprilang Riano was 18th with 1148. And Taylor Nelson was also 19th for 1148. Another highlight this year was Sacramento Media Champions. It's a very prestigious event that you have to qualify for. And Navia Brown ended up getting first place in that in the 3200. So it was a very successful year for us, you know, with some new coaching staffs and a lot of turnover, especially post-COVID. But we've seen tremendous dedication from these athletes, you know, with everything they have, not only school, but putting track. And we really try to push them. And I'm definitely pushing to be the best version of them. I'm definitely not the idiot that has to be around with, but I definitely want them to be the best version. And we're excited to see what the program builds. They've already trained a lot of them this summer and clearly have practiced it before we got here. So that's kind of how we run our program here. Another highlight, Michael will be running at U of College next year with some great athletes. I have some very returning, we've got a coach from U of State, some of the other athletes are there too. So they'll be together, and I think we'll have a really good team at U of College. And then Taylor Nelson will look to be flying out for San Diego State in distance. Thank you guys for the time and free data.
We call some of them up here to present them with certificates. I know some of the board members signed certificates.
You have your 12.
I don't know which one. Congratulations, Emma. We'll call it if I can cool, okay? Emma Tiara, congratulations. Navia Brown? Jasmine?
I have Taylor Nelson. Autumn Bonds. And then Michael Malangi. Your beats is better than his there.
I'll do it back here.
That can be a terrible picture.
Okay, one, two, good group, smile. Thank you very much.
So we have a second round of all Sergio Cora's here to introduce his coaches from YC. I believe that's Mr. Lynch.
Hello, good evening, members of the board, district office cabinet, families, and students. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize our amazing athletes from U of City High School. I'm going to start off with Mr. Matt Lynch, coach for Striking Field.
Cool, it's my first time in the new boardroom, first loss. It's nice to skill. To the parents, wow, when you sit in front, you don't know who comes in behind you. But to the parents, all of you guys that have athletes, we just want to thank you, and I'll speak on behalf of all coaches. But to have parents entrust us to pour into your kids means a lot. And I just want to agree, a sport like track and field, it's very challenging physically and mentally. So to the parents, the athletes that I personally approach, thank you. And I know we speak for all coaches in this room because it's a grind. You know, we always tell kids that our sport is other sports punishment. If you get in trouble with football, what does the coach do? Coach says you go run. If you get in trouble in basketball, coach says you go run. No, now all they're going to do is run. We have a special group of kids because they also run fast. And it's one of those things, the only way that you run fast or throw far is by putting in work. There is a technical side to our sport that is also important. But at the end of the day, how much you put in is what you get out. So just as Swangie shared with all that his kids accomplished, all that our kids accomplished, it's only because of hard work. So these kids have accomplished a lot. And so thank you guys for spending time to congratulate them and award them for what they've accomplished. So all the athletes on our list today, they were all Masters qualifiers. So as Swangie kind of shared, the way that the progression goes in track and field is you have your league championship, which is the seven schools that we rotate kind of racing and doing all of our sports again. And then the next kind of branch above that is Division II, which is what our schools are in. Division II is basically all the way down from Turlock to Vacaville up to where we are, all the Division II schools. They got about like 1700 to like 1900 kids, and it's all those schools. And then after Division II, if you get top six in your event, then you go to the Masters, which is Division I all the way to Division V. And there's over 200 schools in that pool. So when he's saying, and we're saying that these kids are placing top 20, top 19, top 15, top 10, 200 schools. And then you think about how many athletes are on each of those track programs. They're accomplishing something very, very great. And once you get to that place where you have the California State Meet, like this year, our section is represented amongst a bunch of sections in California. And the Sacquawkeen section was on the podium almost as much as any other section. So our section is very, very competitive too. So these kids are racing against the best in the state almost every weekend. So it's huge. So the first kid that I want to highlight, his name is Amias Bazemore. And Amias Bazemore qualified for the Masters Meet. Last year, he was part of our 4x100 record team. And if you guys have been around, you know that U of City is 100 years old. So when you break a record at U of City, you're amongst kids that have been at that school for 100 years. And this year, he broke the 200 meter school record. So his name is on the board twice for school records. And he placed 10th in our entire section. So again, those 200 schools with all their track athletes, he ranked 10th in the 200 at the Masters Meet. So congratulations to Amias. Janero Brown also qualified for the Masters Meet. So he made it out of league, made it out of the Division II, and went to the section meet with all those 200 schools. And he had a long jump PR of 22 feet two, which is very, very far, taking about four jumps to get there. He didn't make one jump. And he placed ninth in the entire section. So in that top 10 realm amongst 200 schools and a bunch of athletes. Our next athlete was Anjali Davis. Anjali Davis throws shot put and discus. And shot put is her thing. She's really good. She's really good. Her PR is 37.1. And so just a cool little thing about Anjali is she placed first place in the shot put eight times this year. So eight different track meets, and we only had 13 track meets. And she got first at eight of them, and she got top three at 13 of them. So there's only two times that she wasn't in the top three in the shot put. And so a very successful year for Anjali. And then we have Grace Nelson, who also qualified for the Masters Meet. And Grace finished at 22nd in the whole entire section. So again, we're saying these numbers, you're talking about thousands and thousands of kids. So Grace was 22nd in the discus. And then we have our girls' 4x14. We have, well, let me start, let me do this way. So we have Mia Beltran, who's on our 4x14. But she also runs the 800 in the open four, and she high jumps. So she does a lot of other events. And in the 800, she placed 19th at the Masters Meet. So top 20 in the whole entire section for the 800. And she's also part of our 4x14. Jewel Perry, who's also part of our 4x14. So Jewel is currently our Frosch Sock Girls 200 meter record holder and 400 meter record holder. And last year, she's part of our record-breaking 4x1 and 4x4 varsity team. And Jewel placed top 10 in the Masters Meet for the 400 with a time of 5774, which is faster than me. And our other two members of our 4x14 are Juju and Jalisa. And they both ran hurdles this year, the 400, the 100 a couple times, the 200 a couple times. So they're very spread out with their events as well. And they're both on our 4x100 relay team too. But the 4x100 relay team that they're part of placed 13 in the entire section. And they ran the fifth fastest time in school history that I can find. And so they're amongst 100 years old school in the fastest five groups of girls in the relay team that we've ever had. So a lot of hard work from all these athletes, a lot of success. And the beautiful thing about it is on this list, we only graduated one kid, so Coach Matt gets to get open access. We're going to make some noise next year for Brett. It's going to be awesome. But if we can clap it up for all of them. They were here? No. Janero, it's happening for Janaro. Anjali Davis. Be third. Yeah? Beltran.
What's that, what about?
Grace. You going to tag on Facebook? Can we all fit?
You're all fitting. And I wish, smile, thank you, great, great smiles. Thank you.
See, he's very passionate, proud of what he does. So he's an amazing coach. Next, we want to recognize our baseball team. Lieutenant Maury Castaneda cannot be here today. But we did have our boys, varsity baseball, finished second in the Capital Valley Conference. Our varsity baseball played in round one of the CIF Sacquawkeen section, Division II baseball playoffs. So we want to honor our athletes. Brent Gallegos, he was a leader on and off the field. Brent's contributions greatly impacted or outstanding. Finished this season even the honkers in the following categories: batting average, slugging percentage, hits, run score, stolen bases. Another notable for Brent included the first-team All-CBC Conference. He was also selected to play in the Sacramento Area Senior All-Star Game, which occurred this past Sunday, and will be attending Buick College in the fall. Our next athlete is Chris CJ Hopper. Coach Castaneda said that he was one of the most reliable defenders we have had in some time in U of City. CJ had a perfect fielding percentage this season, a perfect 60 for 60. So not one mistake or error. CJ's defense was praised by numerous opponents as remarkable and one of the best outfielders in the area. CJ's accomplishments include first-team All-CBC Conference, all-tournament team selection for the El Camino Spring Break Tournament. He finished the school year with a 4.0 GPA for the semester. He was also selected to play in the Sacramento Area Senior All-Star Game, which occurred this past Sunday, and will also be attending Buick College in the fall. Congratulations. Jake Gonzalez, he was the best pitcher of the team this season. No throughout the CBC Conference. As an ace, Jake had a record of fighting two and could always be counted on to get his tremendous starts on the mound. Some of Jake's other accomplishments and honors include first-team All-CBC Conference, all-tournament team for the El Camino Spring Break Tournament, and also finished the school year with a 4.0 GPA for the semester. And he will be pitching for Buick College next season as well. Congratulations. And James Garson, he broke the school record for doubles this season with 17. He also led the CBC Conference in slugging percentage on fourth in RBIs. James just completed his junior year and will be a leader on the team for next year. So other accomplishments, first-team All-CBC Conference, and finished the school year with a 3.8 GPA. So congratulations.
So you're recognized. This one's from you that says baseball. Where's Jake, these symbols? Jessica?
Smile. Thank you, great pitcher, congratulations.
So for boys volleyball, Coach Dove was not able to be here. But we have Luke McCallis. He had a wonderful season, he's a freshman. He was a great defensive player. He's going to be back with us next year. So we're happy for Luke. So congratulations for Luke McCallis. And for boys tennis, I want to recognize Pushkar Kira. He had a, he worked hard all year. He's an 11th grader, is going to be with us next year. So our coach Brian Dudley was not willing to be here today, but you'd love to recognize him. All right? And for softball, our coach Amy O'Chesney was not able to be here. But she would like to recognize Lexi Dell. So Lexi, Lexi Dell in the CBC All-Conference team. She worked hard day in and day out, both on the field and in the classroom, proving to be the ideal student athlete. Lexi led the team with 13 RBIs, nine doubles, and hit her grand slam of the season. Behind the plate, as a catcher, she showed aggression by picking off runners, keeping and stealing attempts low. As a teammate, Lexi is always the first one to get on the team, help pick her teammates up whenever they needed her. The varsity coaching staff is excited to watch Lexi during her senior year and see how much more she can accomplish. Congratulations to Lexi Dell.
Congratulations. Yeah, you got to use an announcer.
Great smiles, thank you. Congratulations.
And next, I would like to introduce our amazing coaching staff. We set a cheer, it's going to be called Go On, and Toby Brant.
Hello, everyone. Hello. Just wanted to say thank you for having us. For those of you that don't know, we have stunt program, so which is different than our traditional cheer. It's at like the football games. So like very different. It is two teams, they go head-to-head at the same time doing the exact same routine. It's broken down into four quarters, different elements in each quarter. There's a halftime, there's a referee, there's judges. Basically, you do the routines at the same time. The judges up there decide who was technically correct. And whoever that is, we give a point. At the end of the game, whoever has the most points, we win. We were fortunate enough this year that we placed second in our league. We were very honored to be present. This is only our fifth year having this program. So we've worked really hard these last five years as coaches, and mainly the kids, obviously. We were second in the league, right behind Roseville. We made it to our playoffs. This is our first year that we made it to playoffs. We came close last year, but we just missed it. We went to playoffs, we won the first round. We went into the second round, and we, unfortunately, we lost. But the team we lost to was also the team that won the division playoffs. So it's, I guess if you're going to lose this, not bad to go. The girls have worked really hard this last year. We have a very small team. Typically, you have to have a minimum of 12 kids in order to put the routines out there. We had 16 kids. So we didn't have any really extra kids. We went up against multiple kids, like at playoffs, we were the smallest team. Most of those teams have 20 to 30 kids on a team, so they can really pick of how they need to put them together. So the kids worked really, really hard for being such a small team. They, you know, we're looking forward to next season. Hopefully, we'll be first in our division or in our league and go to playoffs and get even further on. And now this is such a great sport. It gives the kids a lot of scholarship opportunities. Three of our girls this year have scholarships to go into college for stunts. Two of our girls from prior years won from last year. She went on to a Division II school on a scholarship and won her national championship for stunts. Or not her, but her team. A girl from, one of our students from the year prior to that, went on to her, to her's college scholarship and won her NAIA college national championships as well, two years in a row, the first year and last, this last year as well. So we're really excited for these kids and the opportunities that this gives them. So thank you for having us and honoring the girls because they worked really hard and they deserve it.
One certificate, I'm not sure how we share that.
Very team sport, even raised support.
Okay, I did one now. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you to all our athletes and congratulations to the trumpiness of all their hard work. If anyone wanted to shuffle out, I won't be offended.
Come on, reveal cap, y'all.
No update from Eddie, just seeing dogs.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine. He's bringing a stellar kid.
If there's no objections, a hundred questions to take our one comment from the public on items on agenda before the reports. They didn't want to listen, as much as we would love for them to stay, is that okay?
I have a hard time hearing.
I'm sorry, to take the comment now before our reports. Yes.
Alright, good evening to the school board and audience. My name is Tvi Ambel and I'm a rising junior at River Valley High School. Let me recognize me from CAD, the Student Public Health Internship. We came recently around three weeks ago to present in front of the school board. In my two years I've been in high school, I've been to quite a few school board meetings. Whether it be for redistricting, we did my freshman year CAD or other topics. I've had the opportunity to speak in front of the school board on many occasions and I greatly value all of my experiences here. This prompted me to run in my high school ASV elections and I'm proud to say that I've come here to introduce myself as the new River Valley School Board Representative. I'm excited for the opportunity to work alongside the school board as I become the voice and representative of my school. And peers delegating any news or information to the board. I'm really honored for this opportunity and I really look forward to working with y'all and creating a more positive and successful school year. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
Welcome, thank you, yes. And I look forward to hearing from you as the year goes on. Moving forward, District High Set.
Mr. Bismont, our incoming Assistant Superintendent of Education Services is going to share on this topic tonight.
Good evening, Lord, I'm still kind of trying to figure out how you do a twenty-two foot long jump. We were back there trying to like, this is it, I'm.
Long way.
Yes.
We'd like to watch you grow.
While you're figuring it out. So before I start, one of our, so the reason this program works in our district honestly is because of our teacher. Nancy Cantures can't be here this evening, but she is phenomenal. And she, I just have no other word I can describe her. So I just want to make sure to lift her up here because the reason why these kids get through this program is because of her relationship building. Her passion and her just leveling these kids up every single day. So I want to thank her for the program that she's, she's been developing. Elena, Chris and Claudia at Albert Pal High School, that's where the High Set happens in the spring. And then Sharon Harris is one of our professors this year who has done a phenomenal job working with our kids. So the purpose of the High Set is, we have a lot of students, you know, through variety of reasons are challenged for four years. And they get, they become credit deficient. And sometimes when this happens, there's kind of, sometimes hopelessness or they don't think they can finish. And so a lot of kids when they graduate high school, they'll go to adult ed. They'll do GED courses, they'll do High Set courses and it gives them something to have leverage when they get out of high school and when they graduate. So this is just another opportunity for kids, if they're at that place when they're seniors. To give them something to leave high school with, something tangible that gives them leverage when they get out to the real world. It's a great program. But eventually, as a district, you want to have less kids taking this so they can get their diplomas. So it's a good, it doesn't catch everybody, but it's just something extra to have to help kids maybe high school. So currently, we have thirty-four kids enrolled this year. This is the third year, we got right there that we've been doing it. I highlight the awesome teacher because that's the reason it works, she's just awesome. And we have an online academic program for each student who goes through the High Set. And just, there's two popular tests, there's the High Set and GED. Very similar, I think the biggest difference is the, the High Set has five tests, the GED has four. And the big difference is in the High Set, they have reading and writing. And in the GED, they just have language arts, so that's the difference of the testing between the two tests. But they both, when you take, when you get to credential, they're accepted by the military, Department of Education, colleges. So it gives kids something they can go to college with, which is pretty, pretty good for some of these kids. This is one of my favorite slides, so when Nancy does her class in the beginning, she has short-term goals and long-term goals. And as I read through, I kind of highlighted a few that I thought were. You know, being a teenager, thinking back to that year when you're seniors. You know, finish school, short-term goals, get a, get my, get a diploma and graduate. Get out of high school, graduate early, they have, she really works with my goal set. And then some of my favorite ones are long-term goals, the second one you can see is get a cat. It's a goal, you know. My other, my other favorite one was make a good amount of money through small hustles. Have tens of thousands in my savings, that's viable. But you know, another one is you know, have, keep my family safe at the end. You know, so these kids in these, in this class, they really have something to look forward to with this. And she really helps them persevere through the class by maintaining that focus on goal setting, which I think is really important. Just a snapshot of Peters over the past three years. And I mentioned with, with this class, it's really relationship focused. She does a great job on, on every, knowing every kid. And some of these students who get in this program are kids who might get missed in high school sometimes. Or they might be kind of in the middle of the pack or. It is not, they might not make a connection. So she does a really good job on connecting with these students. I've seen it firsthand and it's pretty amazing. This is some feedback, some of the students gave at the end of the course. Some of the things to highlight on this. Were just like I mentioned, the, the connection, you know, the, the confidence my teacher gave me. And the support for Mrs. C, she's very concerned about her students. By far the best teacher I've ever met, a teacher, it's just, you know, I think it highlights something in our district is our teachers. I mean, they can have an indelible impact on kids and it's been awesome working with this program this year. Next steps, and ideally, like I said, you want to decrease the amount of students taking in the High Set so they're getting their diploma. I think something important is having more tar, really targeted intervention for kids who are credit deficient. When they start, just I mean, from freshman year to senior year, but especially as they become juniors and seniors. Really targeting those students who we see credit deficient, providing really intervention for them. So they don't have to go over the High Set. Support High Set students at both home site and, and Albert Pal. I think we could continue to look at strategic ways to offer High Set to kids at the home site and at Albert Pal. And then this is something I would recommend to continue to provide as a last option for kids. And we know in our schools, we have a bunch of different options for interventions. We have MTSS, we have home visits, we have High Set, credit recovery, not everything works for every single kid. And so when we know the kid, we know what they come to us with, the counselors know the students, we can really have a, a wraparound approach for each kid. And I think if we continue to have that mindset. We'll continue to decrease the amount of kids taking the High Set, more diplomas, but it's just. I wanted to highlight, this is a program that has worked for these kids. And we have our last test next Wednesday. So one of our kids, he has, he's one away from getting his High Set credential, he just needs to pass a writing test. So he's testing next Wednesday, that'll be the last one for the, for the school year.
I just wanted to say something about Mrs. Cantures, she was a teacher when I was second grade, elementary years. And I remember being in second grade, and I didn't have her as a teacher, but I wish I did. Because she was known to be that teacher that was always smiling. She also did like chick hatching stuff, which I've done in my classes since, but I remembered what she did through her program. You know, way back when I was in second and third grade, so she's a phenomenal teacher and I appreciate you highlighting her.
Yes, and she is retired, but comes back to do this.
Yeah.
So that is pretty amazing, yes, to retire teachers who come back, for a long, and then came back and worked part-time for us. So Nancy is an example of a retired teacher who can't give up, not working instead.
Yeah. You know, not everybody realizes that you cannot get financial aid if you don't have a high school diploma. So even if you were interested in a, like a CTE pathway through UPA College, you wouldn't be eligible for financial aid. The High Set, excuse me, gives those students that opportunity. And also, you can't go into the military, this gives them the opportunity to go into the military. So it is that second chance.
Now for our public hearing on the District Al Cap with.
I'm actually feeling a little melancholy tonight, this is my last opportunity to present the LCAP for public hearing. I have a smile when I said that, I'm just scared. So the LCAP is a three-year plan. So this spring, as we have prepared this plan, we are preparing for the third year. So this will be the final year of this specific plan. So next spring at this time, we will be preparing probably on a new template with different requirements. But this is the final one for this plan. Okay, so this slide gives you an idea of how the LCAP comes together. So you determine student needs, set your goals, implement your budget and then take the actions. And to achieve those goals, so that is how the model is set up. This gives you a timeline to kind of help you see how we move through the LCAP process over the course of the year. It begins with the approval of the LCAP at the end of one school year. And then as soon as that is done, we begin implementing the LCAP. And work through that over the course of the year. We engage with our educational partners in our input meetings. And then in the spring again, we review, revise and present again the new LCAP. Last year was the first year this new ed code came into place. But there is rules now around unused funds. In the past, unused funds for the LCAP were able to be added to the general fund and be used for other things like facilities repair. Now we can no longer do that, any LCAP funds that are remaining have to be labeled as carryover and added back into the LCAP for the, for the next year and be used in that following year. Right now, we have four point one million of carryover to be added to the funds for this year. So you'll see that calculation as we move through, but that is a new law as of last year. So here we look at the total district budget, that one hundred and twenty-five million is minus the, the wedges there. Then you have the thirty-seven million is our allocated LCAP funding for this year. But when you add the four million in carryover to it, our LCAP for, that we need to plan for, budget for is forty-one million. Okay, so the state has the following requirements on what you have to take into consideration and plan for in your LCAP. And they are called the eight priorities. And among these priorities, you make sure that within your goals, you have addressed all of the state's priorities. So we have basic services or conditions of learning, which has to do with teacher credentialing, providing appropriate instructional materials. And then safe, clean facilities. And then of course, we required to ensure that we're teaching the state's standards. We are required to engage with our families. Our goal, of course, is student achievement, student engagement, student engagement meaning those kids are coming to school. So that's talking about your chronic absenteeism, suspension rates, those pieces, in-school climate. How schools, how students interact with the school and how they feel at school. And then access to a broad course of study that students have lots of opportunities for a variety of learning on your campuses. And then other student outcomes, so that could be other offerings that you have like CTE programs and the High Set program, different things that you could provide early college. What else are you doing to ensure students have opportunities for success? So with goal one, you can see down in the parentheses there at the bottom, this goal, we address priorities one, two and seven with goal one, so that's your, your basic services, your teaching of the state's standards and, and broad course of study, all of those are addressed in goal one. You can see the goal at the top, it's about providing that learning environment, those basic services. And we call this our basic services goal. So the current actions you can see, it's a long list. It has a lot to do with our teacher training, our professional development days for teachers come out of this, for this goal. Our assistant principals ensuring appropriate support staff on campuses. And then PD and our class sizes is addressed in goal one. On this slide, this is continued for the same goal. And our tech specialists, instructional aides, avid. And then all of the funding that goes to the school sites, the school sites LCAP budgets. Their individual budgets, also a piece for each goal is provided to the school. So they can work on this goal as well of their own planning and choosing and not just the district-wide pieces. In terms of our stakeholder input for goal one. You'll see a list here, some of the things are things that we see every year, more intervention, more tutoring. We also have some different ones this year, facilities improvement. That's not something that can be that we can do a lot with, out of the LCAP. But that's something that usually comes up in LCAP input meetings, a request for that. And then technology for students to take home, we've started some of that work. But that's something that's always brought up in our meetings. Increase in after-school programs, we are increasing ours through our ELOP funds. It's not something we pay. It's not something we pay for out of LCAP, but it is something that's frequently requested in our, in our meetings. Any questions uh so far on goal one?
I have a question. Um, it's a general question, when you write out these actions, um, when you're submitting the LCAP. Do you have to put parameters on it, like make it measurable? So like for example, when you say, you write in uh maintain smaller class sizes. What's like in relation to what, do you have to input that or no?
Um. Yes, we have, there are not specific to that, but there are metrics that are required for each goal. So for example, um with goal one, if we're saying safe, clean facilities. Then we are, we have to choose a, a metric to measure by, there is one required one that we have to. There's some that we get to choose and some that are required, so for anything. So when you do your basic services piece, you are required to use um. Uh, the FIT, and uh that's something that Scott could definitely talk about or mark. But um that is a, a state-required. Tool that you use to determine whether or not your, your facilities are in good shape and those are completed each year. At all of our school sites, and those have to be in their part of the school's um accountability report card. So and in, in addition to that, you would have CAS. As we talk about some of our other pieces, um in addition, you're gonna have your climate, your school climate survey would be a piece of it. Um, the CAS scores, LCAP scores, all of those state-required pieces are metrics on the LCAP.
So I guess, my question is, at some point, like you will. Be able to assess whether or not you're successful in achieving goal one, right?
Uh, yes.
Theoretically, at the end, correct?
So. Whether or not you met those metrics.
Yeah, so are those, in order to determine that, would, would it be a fair statement to say that. We would go down the current actions list and see whether or not we completed those actions?
Yes, that is something you can do.
So Jasmine, if you remember, we're developing the board uh calendar, and so you'll see populated in that calendar will be LCAP updates. So the uh Bettina will go through the action plan and the metrics that were uh listed. And talk about how we're moving in the direction of meeting our, our action plan or LCAP.
Okay.
And this just so we understand. These, what you set in motion, it's a three-year plan, you set it in motion for three years. You try and you work on these things, you take a look, so next spring, it'll be completely different and next year you're going to have to evaluate. Um, how you've done with these areas and then what you might do differently. Yeah, um, one challenging gets into, and we'll talk at the end because I have a slide that discusses that. But one of the challenges is you, when you have so much staffing in your LCAP, like we do and like most districts do. Like um over seventy percent of our LCAP uh are support staff. So you have to really take that con- into consideration when you're talking about changes.
I, I would just like to just advocate that whenever those updates happen, I'd like to see uh, or maybe something I'd like to, to answer. Um, is something that shows like a measurement, whether that's, this is our baseline, this is where we are now.
And that is in the LCAP, if you look at the true document and I'm happy to show you, and we can look at it, it's in those pages, those are required.
The one that you're talking about is fifteen of seventy-two.
Positive?
She's positive.
She's positive, yeah.
And they have the metrics for the, the class sizes.
And you'll see the other line in there.
Okay.
So with class sizes, we take the um. What we have is our, our set parameters, and then when whatever we're underneath that is, and we are. In, in uh. In, in most every level, not most every, in every level, our class sizes, we will have a few class sizes. At of our, in different schools that are a little higher than our averages, but overall, we are quite low. We're in, by most district standards, we're overstretched, that's just an aside. So um. Goal two, we call our student achievement goal, it is around ensuring that we provide. Um, a comprehensive program that leads to graduation for all students. Um, the actions related to this goal are, are really in support of ensuring students have what they need, um. You can take a look there, our fall into leadership conference, college campus tours, um. Maintaining our coordinators, online tools for teachers and students. And then our things around uh supporting our English learners.
I have a question about that one, on this one, college campus tours for high school students. Do we currently offer that for any student that's just not part of Avid? Cause I know that's a huge part, that's a huge component of Avid, but not very many kids are, you know, percentage-wise are in Avid. So are we performing that for kids that are not in Avid?
Um, right now, we have, uh, uh, no.
Okay.
Um, but that's primarily because we are fairly limited on our field trips, period. Avid is one of the things that we've tried to keep going, because in order to keep um. Participating in Avid, that's one of the requirements is to offer that. But we haven't, uh unfortunately, this year had the opportunity to offer a lot of field trips. But you're right, that one is important for everyone. Some of the uh. Input that emerged around goal two is uh improving some of our existing programs, our ELD. Um, and then providing funding for additional clubs. After-school options, we have the sports and providing more free opportunities on school campuses for after-school. Programs, it comes up in all the goals, um, and we are adding. Continuing to hire and add to our after-school program. Um, we still have waitlists, so if you know anybody that's looking for a job in an after-school program, that would be great. Goal three is our um family engagement goal, this is where we. Work on those priorities three, five, and six, five and six being um parent involvement, student engagement, and then school climate. So with this goal, you're talking about PBIS, safety, providing our counselors. Um, maintaining that reduced high school counselor ratio. Our summer school programs, credit recovery, social workers, all of those things are things that we build in to try to. Keep students engaged, on track for graduation, and um, um, all the appropriate interventions. Provided to ensure uh students meet our, our goal of graduation for everyone. Um, this is a continuation, a lot to do with safety on this one and uh family communication. Our campus resource officers, campus supervisors are all paid through goal three. Our websites and our parent communication. So the themes for this one. Um, that, the top one there being something that has come up multiple times, so specifically in the last two years. Is providing more options for middle school and high school. As you know, students in middle school, uh we don't have an Alted option for them other than YCIA. Increasing social workers, counselors, that's something that is requested, has been requested a lot the last couple of years. Same with school safety. And then getting back to adding some of those family nights. And then uh continue, making sure we continue summer school for K through twelve.
Can I just ask one more question, um, on all of these themes, um, for all three goals. Are these what will be primarily, I mean, are these what we really look at when we start looking at creating a new LCAP?
Yes, so the input you receive um is the information and, and it's from all educational partners. Our um parents, teachers, classified and administrators. All weighing in and sharing um their ideas or what they see or the needs um on their local campuses. And then uh we take that and we look at what's possible and to try to add and, and looking at, you know. Our funding that we have left, that's not our already allocated and, and what we can add, and that's actually. Our next slide is our new additions. So we are implementing, we've been talking about our wellness centers, we've had um. Some already up and going on school sites, and now this summer, we will have them all complete. And uh a wellness center at each school site, starting next year. Um, we're going to continue our campus supervisors extended hours, we did that during COVID, and we're maintaining those hours through LCAP. This one is a big one, we are purchasing school buses, one of the requested pieces. Through our input sessions and we know um the issue with field trips, but a lot of. Our families are really wanting uh home-to-school transportation, they've had that in the past, it's very important for their family, and so. We are looking at purchasing uh some new school buses to try to further um support. To support that and uh we can speak to that further if you're interested, but. We have allocated funding for approximately thirty new school buses.
Do you have drivers for that?
That's what we're hoping it will. Engage. You know, a good working air conditioning goes a long way, right? And then um Chromebooks for students to use at home, that is something we are going to start rolling out. Uh, one-to-one so that students have um that opportunity to have what they need at home, we've done some of that. This would be a greater expansion of that, we're finalizing and finishing up uh. Some of the playgrounds, um, we have a new construction pathway at UBA City High School for CTE.
Um, I just have a question, maybe some Scott question about the uh devices. Um, and maybe you guys can circle back with me afterwards, but before I forget. If we're gonna roll out the devices as a one-to-one at home use too, are we going to be implementing something about lost damage? Or recruitment of that? Parents.
Essentially.
Or like a lost textbook.
Yeah. Thank you.
And uh you'll remember last year, we started the CNA program, our um. Certified nursing assistant program through CTE, this year we will be able to add a construction pathway. So um that will begin in the fall uh at YC. Um, another issue that we have had and that we've had, especially our D-LAC, our English learner, parents of English learners. Have requested um more interpretation support. We were able to add an additional inter- Farsi interpreter this year and um a language. Kind of hotline called Language Link that gives you the opportunity. That um has been very helpful at some of our school sites that have a lot of um newcomers. Whose families don't speak much, if any English, they're able to call a number. And punch in the language, it takes a minute, but then someone will come on the line. Whatever the language is and help you, and then you can translate right there through the phone. And that has been very helpful in explaining really simple things like drop-off and pickup and. Um, homework and just helping with some of those basic needs. Especially at the uh elementary level for new families in the community. And then uh while it's not paid for out of LCAP, we are continuing to expand um our enrichment, our after-school enrichment programs. But also academic enrichment, which is paid for out of the. Okay. And uh. So Jasmine, this is answers part of your question, um. In addition to the required um metrics that you have to use to determine whether or not you're. Um, moving in the right direction with the, your goals. Um, you also have local indicators that you're required to take a look at and report out on. So for academic performance, specifically um priority two of the state's priorities. Implementation of academic standards, we're required to report out where we are with this. Well, the standards that our teachers are teaching right now have been out now for some time. So um in the first year or two that you have a new framework and you're like the transition to common core standards. Those first years you might um uh consider your district, depending on the factors you're taking into consideration. You would consider your district as, you know, limited implementation or uh first. Stages of implementation and then you work through a rubric on implementation. All of the uh standards have been rolled out for a number of years at this point, so. Uh, we consider ourselves at full implementation across our academic standards. Um, as we've talked about a little bit before, when it comes to the um state adoption schedule. Within the next year, we fully anticipate the new math framework to be up, when that happens. There will be new expectations and that this um implementation of academic standards will start again. There'll be a lot of training and professional development around the framework, and then there'll be a new formal adoption. Of uh materials, and then we will move back through the stages of implementation. Um, the other local indicator. Um, number seven, access to a broad course of study, we do very well there, we have a lot of offerings in our high schools. With regard to our um CTE electives. Um, so we exceed expectations that are around what we're providing. Um, conditions and climate. This is that goal one, uh facilities, teachers, instructional materials. The key piece, the key measurement in that particular area is teacher misassignment. Um, and that's, we uh discussed for momentarily earlier, but right this past. This existing school year, which is the data we use to move into plan for next year, we had thirty teachers uh misassign. That doesn't mean that they were teaching something they weren't specifically credentialed to teach, it means that they aren't fully credentialed. And so we have a number of teachers in that situation, um, some of them are. Like CTE teachers that have work experience, but don't have all of the pieces that they need to be able to file for that specific credential. Um, and some are teacher interns that are, have their bachelor's degree. And are in a credentialing program but aren't fully credentialed, so those are the teachers that you find in that category and that's. That's one of the big ones that you use to determine your success towards that one. Um, parent and family engagement, like I mentioned before, our role is to do what we can to engage families, bring them in. Make sure they feel part of the school community and that their voices are heard. They have opportunities to provide input, not just for the LCAP but other things. And one of the ways that um we have been successful with that in the past. And one of the ways that um we have been successful with that in the past. Especially at our K eight schools are those family night events. And so that's something we definitely want to return to. Um to and that really, those are the ways you can get the parents on campus and have. Some of those uh conversations outside of parent conferences. And then school climate. School climate, we are required to provide a survey that specifically addresses. Um for both parents and students, how they feel on campus. And we're gonna take a look at that data, it is um. Not what we would like it to be, but this, we've had a huge drop across the board um. Since COVID and part of the school climate issue is. All of the information and the news about schools shootings that. Um obviously decreases safety regardless of whether or not that's happened on any of your campus, but that. Is a feeling that people carry with them to school, that school connectedness. And um academic motivation are pieces that we have scored higher in the past. And it's something that we're uh definitely want to prioritize and target for improvement. As we continue to move out of. This post-COVID era.
How do you measure school connectedness? I mean, I think the other two.
How students feel about um. You know, coming to school, wearing their school shirts. All of those things, there is a series of questions that address that specific piece that they're looking for. You know, the answers to and kids that feel like kids that have a favorite teacher on campus, kids that have a group of friends. That they s- spend time with each day at school, that's. Okay, and I referenced this a little bit before, our um. It's important to understand the breakdown of expenditures in LCAP, but because we do pay. Um it is a support services document, the whole idea is to provide additional supports to those. To students. So our personnel for this specific LCAP is um just over thirty million, non-personnel eleven million. So and that adds up to our total LCAP and so as we move into next year and we're thinking about. Um adjustments to the LCAP, we do have to take into consideration what it is. You'll notice like in the middle and twenty-two, twenty-three, it dropped down to fifty-two percent. That was because that particular year we had um seven million in rollover or carryover funds, you don't. You add people to carryover funds, so that year that percentage looked lower. But we um you can see from twenty-one, twenty-two and now they share that um seventy percent is what we. Have for staffing in the LCAP. Okay. Go ahead, Kirsten.
Question, thank you for your presentation, it was very thorough and um. And uh and I wanna ask a few questions. First of all, with the metrics, so I read most of the LCAP. I did skip the last twenty-one pages since they were just instructions. But with regards to the metrics that I see that you've identified. One of the things, for example, let me pull out the graduation rate, right? With your goal one, um so year two graduation rate as it stands on the LCAP um report. You've indicated is um eighty-two point eight percent. Um with the desired outcome for twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-five percent. My guess, is it true, is that the state recommendation level or is that ours?
That is um ours, the state doesn't require a recommendation level. We were working on that pre-COVID, that graduation rate, we were heading to ninety percent. So you want your goal to be a few percentage points ahead.
Right.
Then COVID hit and we went all the way back down to eighty-two. Um during the middle of the three-year plan, you cannot change your.
Goal.
Goal.
I get it.
Um but next year, if as we look at graduation rate, I think first of all. Um looking at preliminary numbers, we're gonna be way higher. We we've shown some really good growth in graduation rate this year, so um. That that's going to change quite a bit and but once we move into next year, we'll have the opportunity to reevaluate all of this.
Okay, so that actually wasn't my real question.
Okay.
That was just the baby question, okay? Alright, so now that I know that's our goal, my other question is, having looked at the report. Um and this is probably because, I don't know, but well, I'll ask you. Um what I don't see is any kind of root cause analysis. As far as um well, for example. Like how to analyze why, the whys. Why the number has has which would adjust the action plan, right, if we knew the root, that's just one case. But for example, I read in the report, it was like fifty-five percent aggregate, I believe, was. Students feel unsafe at school and then you broke it down kind of based on the benchmark years there, so. But to so uh to me, those numbers don't mean a lot because they're based on. Something that's not empirical, really, just a a feeling. Um like um, you know, I unless there are empirical data, so so my. My mother question is. Where is the root cause analysis, where's the deep dive into what exactly is going on? Because we can COVID all day long, but COVID didn't come in and close our schools, COVID didn't come in and do any. That was the ah, those were people's response, that I'm just saying. Like I'm asking, where do you, where do you get the deeper dive as far as what is going on? So that the roots can be addressed, thank you for listening to my long question.
Okay, no problem, so you're right, but what you're talking about isn't the role of this particular document. So um this particular document is how you're supporting um things that a district is doing. And how districts are budgeting for to support our media students. The work that you're talking about in improving test scores and those are. Um in school site plans and the work that um. You know, the superintendent leads with the administrators on setting goals. And and talking through and looking at specific school site data. Um that's the work that's done in our PLCs with uh looking at regular student data. And making adjustments to interventions, tho- those are the pieces that are done differently, that's not. What we do in this document, we are, we do do work through differentiated assistance. With the county office and we do look at specific data and and do some of the work you're talking about. But that's, that work is more strategic plan work versus LCAP.
So if I may interject, I think this is going to answer exactly what you're looking for, so we are in differentiated assistance as a district and our. Support comes from the county office, we're gonna be going through a process called improvement science and so the. Improvement science is to get to the root cause, so don't throw spaghetti on the wall and hope it sticks, so each site because of. Their own unique data are gonna go through the analysis of the why, so why are we, you know, archetagically absent, what's happening, so. It's, there's a process by which you analyze that and you then formulate a hypothesis and then you.
Right.
So that is the process we'll be going through.
Okay, that will have more structure as opposed to, do you feel they?
Correct, as as opposed to assumptions.
Correct, well, exactly, yeah, and with regard to those questions, those are required questions that the state. Has sets of questions that we are um information, survey data. That is one subjective part that we have to include, that's why we talked about those as local indicators. We have to set our own things that we are looking at. We are required to um ask students how they feel at school. We're required to ask those questions and take those things into consideration in our planning. Um but that's not our test scores and and those are the pieces, you know, um. The the fit report, those are the empirical data that we have to use.
Right.
To figure out our decisions, our graduation rate.
Right.
All of those.
But that's that, that's not anything that the school safety is, there's not like incident reports that are included with that, at least not in the.
Well, there is suspension and expulsion data.
I, okay, but.
Those are pieces that are both in the LCAP and those are things that we, we have goals, those are on the dashboard, we're required to keep track. Student attendance. Um the, of course, all of the the state testing and expulsion rates, all of those pieces, chronic absenteeism. All of those things are on the dashboard that we talked about earlier in the year, how we're doing across all of those. So for example, for student engagement, we will judge how we're doing in student engagement. Based on um not just a student. You know, student attendance, but also student graduation rate. And chronic absenteeism and suspension data, students that are very engaged on campus aren't likely to. Continue being suspended, so that combination of state required metrics for how we're judged, how we're doing. On that specific um priority that the state provides, that's one example.
I think, I think there's also an interesting correlation between the subjectiveness of the the survey. Because you know, you take kids into a computer lab or you get them on the Chromebooks and they do this little survey, usually in their English class. And but it is very subjective, you know, it's how they feel, but I think if you look at. Where those numbers are and you compare them to the empirical data that you can have on, you know. Connectedness or or how engaged they are, how likely they are to be in school every day or suspended or whatever. I think you'll see a correlation between that subjective data and the empirical data, so. It's, it's not complete, I mean.
Yeah.
I get your, your.
Without the deep dive or the follow-up questions.
Right.
You know.
Well, we, we.
I understand now.
We do have the past survey, which is an additional layer that asks deeper questions, that's not part of the state piece. But that's something that's done at the school sites to help them understand students' social emotional needs at a deeper level.
But, okay, and then final question. And that is that, so you have the state, what I'm hearing is you have the state, they say you must. Um uh uh use these as the indicators and these must be part. But now you have local indicators, local indicates, like those are our choices.
You have to, you're required to have both.
Right, right.
All of those and to have some of your own, because it's a local control document where they want you.
Or the local control accountability.
But that's, I'm just sharing with you, that's one of the additional requirements is to have some of your own. Things that you're taking a look at, so in other words, have a benchmark uh assessments, not just. Cast because you wanna be looking at your own data.
Right, and so that's this, the academic performance, the academic engagement and conditions and climate, that was. Us and our community and stakeholders coming together and saying, these are also some things, correct?
Correct.
So my curiosity with that in mind is, under conditions and climate, we were, you were discussing. Parent and family engagement and and of course the family night events. One of my questions would be, why wouldn't we also include uh parental volunteers on that engagement list? Um the amount or the, um as far as like the day-to-day investment into the campuses. Because as I understand it, they are, there are volunteers at at almost every site. Would that not be an indicator of parental involvement?
Yes, and uh we could absolutely, and your next LCAP, add that as a measurement. It does get skewed, um some schools have a lot more than others, but um that is if. You know, the team chooses that to be a local indicator for how um we determine success, that's absolutely acceptable. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the. Open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay, so this is the numbers that put all that, but. First of all, I need to give a lot of credit to uh Laura S D, she's the director of uh fiscal accounting, she's in the audience today, so uh. This is a tremendous, thank you very much. This is a hundred and eighty-seven pages of good reading right here. And Laura looked at every page and I looked at some of it. Yeah, exactly, couldn't make money on that. Okay, so we will. So a lot of this is gonna be familiar, I tried to keep my presentation somewhat familiar so you kinda understand. Now where the information's gonna be, but we have a budget cycle, this is just a little indication of where we are. Um yeah, back in January is when we heard the governor's proposal, um in May. January through May, the governor and the legislature kind of fight it out to figure out exactly what they think they're gonna do with the budget. And we are here in June and the state budget is not passed yet, but we have um uh some assumptions that go into the budget. And uh once it's passed um by June thirtieth. If there's major revisions in the revenue, we're gonna come back to you in August and you know, that's what the next little bubble in that circle is, a forty-five day. Budget revision is after the state budget's uh adopted, we need to report out. Uh what happens in revenues and if we made any assumptions uh uh changes in the expenses, usually we just do a revenue update at that point. So some of the big stuff. Uh Pam just spoke to uh the LCAP. The LCAP, really the mandatory piece of that is explaining the supplemental concentration dollars, it's a. Thirty-seven million of ongoing, we had some carryover, so we're up about forty-one million for this twenty twenty-four budget year. Um but our main funding source is the local control funding formula, uh we expect about a hundred and sixty-three million dollars out of that. And of that hundred and sixty-three million dollars, the thirty-seven to forty-one million dollars that Pam was just talking about in supplemental concentration funding. Is a piece of that local control funding. Uh some of the major assumptions that go into uh the LCFAP is we're funded on attendance. Not enrollment, so who, you know, for kiddos that come to a school and um. Another piece of that is how much are we gonna get per student that comes to school, so that per student increase year over year. Going into twenty-three, twenty-four year is eight point two two percent. Our funded ADA, average daily attendance, I hate to use acronym, it's hard to do all this stuff on a spring, so. Um our funded ADA is ten thousand eight fifty-two, that is a decline of three hundred and twenty kids this year. And as we spoke to before, we have kind of two different things, I'm gonna talk to that on a different slide, we have declining enrollment year to year, you know, over. Quite a long period of time, we expect that to continue and of that enrollment, we have less of them coming to school, that's part of our challenge. So even though our per student amount is going up eight point, eight point two percent. Our LCFAP, we're expecting about five point three percent increase because of those factors. So in past budget updates, I've given some information on like a lot of new and new programs and new funding. We don't really have that this year, um and I'll tell you a big part of that is we, we, the state is expecting a thirty-two. Billion dollar deficit in twenty-three, twenty-four. That fact alone also gives business people like me a lot of nervousness about. All this actually happening, they're stating they're gonna give us eight point two two percent. Um a big part of the revenues that come in are property tax revenues, um uh income tax revenues and property tax revenues, but income tax. In- income taxes were delayed until the next fiscal year, we don't even have a good idea what that's gonna look like. But income tax, in- income taxes were delayed until the next fiscal year. We don't even have a good idea what that's gonna look like. So that's. Big part of the risk to this overall budget is what actually is gonna happen. From passing a legislator at uh June thirtieth, but also as we really get an idea of what the budget deficit is next year. There's definitely some risk to revenues here. Um, we love special education. It's a big part of our funding and those expenses um are. Have been increasing more than other expenses for a very long time. We get some state and and uh federal uh funding for that, but we have to do uh a contribution to support special education. For twenty three, twenty four is looking like about twenty one million dollars. And I also wanted to note that in all these figures, we do not have the numbers for the raise because it was just settled, so it's not really in that. We will update you on that number. Actually, June twenty seventh, we're gonna do an AB twelve, a disclosure. Um, that we have to do for our uh when when we negotiate a raise with part of the finance. So that will actually have. These budgeted numbers layered on top what the new expenses are gonna be. So we'll review that with you at the next um. June.
So when you're saying the score, the score, the caller, is this uh that state, that's not even your federal. Funding, right? The eight point two two percent or is it?
So, the eight point two two percent is just on the local control funding formula. We have other funding sources. We have some some other state funding. And some other federal funding. I actually have a slide that will show that.
Okay.
But the reason I highlight this, because this is the bulk of our funding. The local control funding formula. This is it. Did I answer your question or?
We'll see.
Alright, we'll move on. So, enrollment, this is, this has been our trend. So the enrollment that uh we're doing our twenty three, twenty four budget numbers are. It's in the year that says two thousand twenty four, eleven thousand four ninety four. That's what we're estimating. And you can just kind of see the trend and also the next two years are projected as well.
So, when you know the ADA number that you got, which is like ten thousand, almost eleven thousand students. Um, average daily attendance, sorry. Is there a timeframe out of the school year that they go in and take those snapshots?
Yes, so we reported attendance really three times a year. Period one and so period two is when we do and it's really March of the the school year. So, so. We take the basically first two, sevenish, eight months of school and it's reported um a point in time in March.
So, so we don't know what day they want to capture in time? Is that what you're saying? But we recorded in March.
The day that we captured it. So we captured it in March and it's a collective of all the average daily tennis up through that reporting period in.
Okay, okay.
So, COVID funds, we've, you know, we've talked a lot about that, you know, what we've been doing uh with it over the years. They are actually going to run out here. So um. I I've used this slide before. They're restricted. We can only use in certain areas. They are temporary. And uh, you know, as our needs have changed, we've been updating those plans and so we have um had some changes in those expenditures as far as. Actuals versus budgeted. But they're expiring September of twenty four, so we really have this next year to spend those um. Those funds. Uh, we will bring to you uh an updated. Uh, plan for SR three. SR three is kind of the final bucket of money and it's the one of the largest buckets of money. So we're gonna. Bring to you, you know, an updated uh SR three plan. I believe we're doing it at the June.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven. So what's in this, on the expense side of things, what's in this budget? Um, for many years, we've been talking about increasing pension costs, both STIRS and CalPERS. Uh, this is a good year that we're not having an increase in CalSTIRS, so that's awesome. It's gonna remain at nineteen point one percent. But over the last seven, eight, nine years, this has been, this has been a target that's just moving up and it's been a big pressure on school district cost. Uh, PERS, CalPERS for all the classified uh folks, uh that is uh going up by one point three percent to twenty six point seven percent. That is a pressure on our budget because staffing is the biggest, you know, biggest expense that we have here. We have significant inflation. We're all feeling that. Um, our our utilities are expected to go up to twenty five percent, so that's a biggie for this, this district. Um, and in in these numbers, we still have some one time expenses, uh supplemental concentration carryover. We have some uh COVID funds. So that's, that's in these numbers as well. Alright, so this is the visual piece of it, right? So our expenditure, we're expecting a hundred and ninety six million. You can kind of see the different buckets of money. The bottom three squares of that pie graph is people. So this is certificated staff. Teachers, administrators, classified staff, support staff and all. Folks like myself, um technology, maintenance, food service, uh bus drivers. Um, fiscal staff and then all the benefits associated with that. So that's seventy nine percent of our budget in this. You know, of that hundred and ninety six uh million. And then the rest is supplies, services, capital outlay, all that other stuff. These are the actual numbers. So the twenty three, twenty four breakdown, we we take a look at it unrestricted and restricted. As I've spoken in the past, the unrestricted is really the help of your district. Those we don't have request, certain, you know, we don't have specific requirements that we have to spend it on. So that's uh the column that I usually look to as far as the help of the district. Um, well, you know, you can see the revenue number, a hundred and sixty six million. That's mostly LCFF, but we have some other revenues in there as well. And kind of see the numbers going down. So. One number that often kind of um confuses people is that contribution to restricted, you can kind of see in the unrestricted, it's in brackets. So it's basically a contribution, it's a negative number going from unrestricted to restricted. That pays for special education, about twenty million of that, uh about twelve million is for facilities maintenance. Those are all restricted funds. And in the final column to the right is uh combined, you add all that up together and that is uh the number. So, the operating. Um, surplus before settling for the raises. Is uh four point five million dollars and that also includes that transfer out is five million dollars going to Fund fourteen. That's a deferred maintenance. When we update this or the raise, these numbers will change pretty dramatically. So um we probably will not see that transfer out. And um, you know, we'll see that operating surplus uh come down dramatically. Um, we will see that be a deficit because we are actually settling two years in twenty three, twenty four. We are. Settling for twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four, all hitting twenty three, twenty four. So that'll be a significant negative number when I report that back. Okay, ending fund balance. At the end of the fiscal year, this is what we're projecting right now. Restricted resources, I circled that. We're gonna talk about it on the next slide. Uh, we are required to maintain at least three percent. That's the second line there, six million dollars for a minimum state reserve. Uh, we have a fifty thousand dollar revolving uh cash account. Uh, we always maintain that at fifty thousand dollars. And then we have an unassigned, an additional essentially reserve of about fourteen million dollars. And.
Where does that actually go? The other side?
It stays in Fund one, our our general fund, our main fund.
It's no longer our Plan seventeen. Hmm? It's no longer our Plan seventeen.
Okay, so that forty five million that I just was talking about, this is a big number, so I wanna kind of break that down a little bit. So these are restricted revenue, uh restricted fund. The learning recovery emergency block grant. Okay, so part of this tough state budget that we have um in twenty three, twenty four, four. We have already received it. That that part is really again more kind of like the COVID funds to help with learning recovery. Uh, we received it in twenty two, twenty three. Uh, it is restricted. You can only use it on certain things. They are um, they are projecting at this point to claw about a third of that back. So we received it. I don't know exactly what this is gonna look like, but they're essentially gonna say, hey, you know, you're worth six million dollars. That's what we're, that's what, that's what the expectations are right now. Uh, the next line there down is our expanded learning opportunities. That's essentially our expanded after school program. Pam has uh. Uh, reported on that in the past. The third line down there is uh also, so sorry, line one was one time money. That nineteen that's going down to say thirteen, um that's not continuing money. It's one time that we have a number of years to use it if. We receive it or get to keep it. The other one that was one time money in twenty two, twenty three is the third line down. That's the art, music and instructional materials block round. So, we were expecting to receive just under seven million dollars there. We received fifty percent of it in twenty two, twenty three. Now the expectation is that's all we're getting. And again, one time dollars, we have a few years to spend it. So. Um, we're not, we're not expecting to get that, the other half of that, um as we thought we would. Okay, so now we're gonna look at, that's what the budget's looking like. Now we're gonna look at a multi-year projection. So basically. Um, twenty three, twenty four plus two projected years. Here's some of the major uh per uh assumptions when we look at our multi-year projection. So you look at the funded ADA, you'll notice that we are are continuing to see that fall down some. Um. Uh, especially in twenty four, twenty five and then leveling out. And then um. The per s- per pupil increase, we call that LCFF, cost of living adjustment. Uh, is expected to normalize in the next couple of years. And so, you know, close to four percent, close to three percent in twenty five, twenty six. Um, and. Uh, I guess another notable number on there is the CalPERS is expected to also continue to increase the employer portion of that. Uh payroll, uh going up to twenty seven, seven, going up to twenty eight, three percent. So again, additional pressures on budget. I know us budget people are greedy customers. This is just, this is just.
What?
Yes, please.
Would you like us to hold our questions? They'll be in.
Nah, jump in whenever. Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Um, so, just making sure that I understand this correctly. Um, the ADA funded, obviously not the enrollment as previously stated, right? You you already made that.
Funded on attendance, yeah.
Right, it's funded on attendance. Okay, so when we go back to slide four, you don't have to, but when we can flip back to that. So then, your slide four is just the enrollment trend.
Yes.
So, so uh your um, so twenty twenty three, is that actual or project? I'm guessing that's twenty two, twenty three or twenty?
Yeah, sorry, that is twenty two, twenty three and that is actual.
That is actual. So eleven um, uh eleven thousand six hundred and eighty four enrolled and then um. You don't have to go back, but when we flip back to the to to the current multi-year projection, your twenty twenty. Uh, twenty three, twenty four ADA funded was ten thousand eight hundred and fifty two. That's actual, right? So then, so then we had eleven thousand six hundred and eighty four attendees. And then ten thousand eight hundred and fifty eight were the funded, I mean, enrollees and then the ten thousand eight hundred and fifty two. Actual ADA attended on the day that it was needed to let the government know.
So, yes and no. I mean, the answer is uh, so so the reason I use funded ADA. And that is because, and we spoke about this in the past, but this is, yeah, part of the technical side of how we get funded. We get funded at the better of three different options. Current, attendance.
Yes, and this was.
Higher year attendance or the three year average, three prior years average. So, we get the better of those three di- three scenarios.
Okay, so then, um, back to uh now you're in your enrollment trend. So um, so you've projected for twenty four, twenty five, the enrollment to to plummet a hundred and ninety students. Um, uh, which is about the same plummet from twenty one, twenty two. But um, to go down about two hundred students, eleven thousand four hundred and ninety four enrolled. And so here on slide twelve, you're saying. So our anticipated funded ADA will be that thousand students will be absent. I mean, you're, we're already anticipating enrollment, right? So the the projection is eleven thousand four hundred and ninety four. And now we're anticipating also that um one thousand students will be absent. On the date in which ADA is, attendance is taken and funded.
Generally, yes. Uh, but again, it's not what the actual attendance is, is the better of the three scenarios that I said. Cause I'm, I'm.
It's also not a single day, correct? It's not a single day. It's.
It 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 is a cumulative of the months going, of the the attendance periods going up to the March days. Yes.
Okay. Alright, so then we're still in the better of three years. Except, we're in that, except now we don't have the pause button that we had previously.
Excuse me. Um, so during COVID, we had two years that we were held harmless and it was great. So, this is what kind of killed us, like. Hurt us in uh twenty two, twenty three and it's still hurting us is we kind of fell off a cliff, right? We were held, held harmless for two years. We're in a declining enrollment uh situation and so all that caught up to us in twenty two, twenty three. Now, they did give us some levers here to take the best of the three different scenarios. So it insulated our drop off. It would have been much worse otherwise. But yeah, that's, that's kind of.
Because that's the ninety percent attendance, right? That would, that would account for the thousand students being absent. Because uh we have about a ninety to ninety two percent.
Well, ideally and historically, the district has been more like ninety five, ninety five and a half percent. So anywhere from ninety five to ninety six is. Kind of a school districts typically do, but yeah, during COVID and post-COVID, those numbers are coming in at ninety one, five, ninety two. If ninety three, if you're super lucky. So that's been a big challenge for all school districts and state.
Okay, thank you. And so isn't that fair to say that moving forward, we may not be able to have three options to pick from in terms of how to calculate our ADA?
Well, actually, I don't know. I haven't really heard of that. So they did make the change. It's not a temporary change. I expect that that will continue. Yeah.
No, let's get cracking.
Alright. Okay, so yeah, multi-year projections. Oh, I've already gone through that first um. Per column, that's the twenty three, twenty four. So let's just kind of take a look at the second two columns. That's the projected years. You see, our our revenue is kind of hovering right about what it has been. You've got a couple of factors there. We have actually increasing per pupil students. Um, per pupil student funding, but decreasing ADA. So you kind of have some offsets there and we also have some COVID money falling off. So this is. This is kind of a whole picture, unrestricted and restricted together when I'm looking at these numbers. Um. So changing any fund balance, positive here, but again, we do not have the raise incorporated into these numbers. So these will change when we come up to our first interim, which is gonna happen in December. We'll have a better indication. Actually, in June, we're gonna give you an idea of what this is gonna look like. Our full vetting, re-vetting of the budget is gonna happen in uh December, which is our first year.
So that was gonna be my question is so with the uh compensation, it's not gonna be shown. We wouldn't do a forty five day revise. It's gonna be at the first year.
Yeah, because, because we are gonna show it on on June twenty seven, because we we have a required disclosure.
Okay.
That looks at these numbers and layers in the the raise. So we are gonna look at that and disclose it and talk about it on June twenty seven. But it's a. Uh, work to do a hundred and eighty seven pages, so we're gonna do this. These are our other funds. So we run other programs in other funds, child development fund, Fund twelve. You can kind of see it's raised, um. You know, revenues coming in, expenditures going out, pretty um. Uh, static budget there. Uh, child nutrition, we uh do have budgeted right now, additional revenues, then expenditures. So the ending fund balance going up some, but I actually uh fully anticipate now our director of child uh student nutrition to be able to uh. Uh, spend those dollars because she has some needs, so that will most likely be adjusted at some point. Uh, the deferred maintenance fund, um. Uh, we don't have a Fund seventeen, but we do have a deferred maintenance fund. And after we process the raise, those numbers will change. Um, we're gonna have to essentially kind of steal a little bit from that to make this all work. So that. We'll have an update. And then we have other uh Melrose, Melrose uh funds, you know, collects taxpayer uh property tax money. Uh, and uh will eventually repay debt. And last page is really just some thoughts looking forward. I already mentioned this. I started with this. Um. We are, our state is looking at a thirty two billion dollar deficit right now. They're still finalizing the budget and we still don't have all the information. So there is definitely some risk to our revenues. Um. Oh yeah, we're gonna have to, yeah, again, I already told you. Oh yeah, we're gonna have to, yeah, again, I already told you this, we're gonna uh uh, once we get the final number for the raise, we'll be presenting to uh that to you. You know, a a strain on our budgets for finding enrollment, finding ADA, so our daily attendance, I. I really hope that those numbers will start coming up off of that ninety two percent, you know, so I think we 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 will see some improvement there. Inflation is still a factor for everybody, um for wages and supplies and services. And as we're going through our facilities master planning process right now, we do have major facilities, you know, uh from temporary housing to. You know, ideally, it'd be nice to get some permanent, you know, um buildings, uh replacing some of our uh portables, um. I I would say uh Mr. Button has done an extraordinary job of keeping what we have, maintain roofs, painting, flooring, uh you have you as you've. Been approving a lot of these projects, you can kinda see some of that work. Uh at this point, we absolutely can meet um our current projected um. Um obligations, so. Main questions, additional questions.
I have one.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's appropriate right now, or if it would be a different platform, but we just tried to decide with me. Um, I had a conversation with a teacher today, um and she was. Uh talking to me about how her and another teacher are trying to get a live uh book vending machine. So what she called it, and it's a vending machine for folks and stuff, and I thought it was really neat. Um, and when we look at like the funding sources and how you said like, uh in one of the slides, extra funding would um. That we haven't usually for the asset funds, would come back for the board for review on where we're gonna distribute it and whatnot. But just throwing it out there, in the stud world, we have medical community grants, right, that who can top it for self-help work. I I think it would be a nice thing, if it's possible for us to do some sort of med like. Uh grant type of application for our teachers, or you know, our staff, or things that they can implement and or use. In their, you know, for their kids, and then whatever committee there is, cuz that's how that operates. Would then determine whether or not it meets the requirements or whatnot, but I think that would be really cool to to kind of. But. Like ownership, um I don't know if that's the right word or not, but. To give people who are excited about being able to implement something within their classroom, within their schools, giving them the opportunity to. You know, take ownership and and drive with that, you know.
Well, I appreciate the comment, but the the principals have a uh site funds that they can, you know, uh work with the teachers to do some.
Yes.
I've seen a couple of those requests, but it's a part of for exactly that.
I have really that, I have a question, I know that um.
For like PBIS reward.
The the cost of uh utilities.
Yeah.
Going up fairly significantly for all of us, you know. Um, I know that we're um currently building a ton of shade structures. Are there solar panels on these shade structures?
No.
Unfortunate, okay.
Yeah, yeah, solar is a, well, so I mean, that would, yeah, um solar is a very expensive.
I know, it's expensive, but I think in the long run, it would be. Very helpful as far as utility bills.
Yeah. They sometimes pay off and sometimes they don't, yeah, but but I know, it's it's a, I, it's actually, we are looking at it in our facilities master plan, it is something that. And the reason I say that is I penciled out a lot of projects and sometimes they really do, and sometimes they don't, so. Any other question? Yeah.
Uh you might have addressed this in previous meetings, but the restricted COVID ones, what have been used for previous?
Okay, well, so I'm, you know, that's a probably a pretty expensive list, um I will tell you some of the stuff that I know from from the kind of operations side of the house. We talked about um the shade structures is a is a big one, um I think, I don't know if those have been subbed on competition.
Like, or like the restricted ones, like uh filtration sense uh systems. On the school sites, that was one of the um of the extra additional cleaning supplies. Um, we purchased a bunch of masks that we made available for students and staff, those were some of the things for the restricted dollars.
And also, we we, there's extra hours and and there's a number of people that are funded through that too, you know, custody allowance for safety, cuz again, these are restricted ones, you can only use those certain things. Oh, thank you very much, Laura S. Director, current fiscal services, uh yeah, so uh big big purchases in the furniture, um so so that's been a big investment. I don't know exactly the dollar amount to that, it's ten to twenty million, it's insulting. And smart screens too, right? I'm not sure if that's, that might be something on concentration on the technology side, yeah.
Innovation, not a good example, almost, to me, I mean.
Oh, great.
Thanks guys. Any other questions? With that, I'll close with a question. Uh, we've taken a long comment from the public on the agenda, moving on to consent agenda, would.
I'm good, sorry, um eleven G and eleven I. And I had a.
Were there questions?
Um, one needs to be separate, one have. Um, eleven I need separate, um. But I have two question, two question, like one question and one thing I'm clear with you. I just wanted to double check, I didn't see it on here, but I saw it in Friday's mail about. Uh one of the charters of obtaining some of the furniture, just wanted to make sure that that's not included on here, then I would assume.
Yes.
That wouldn't be something to come here, right?
Yeah, that was, that was donated to another education, so it's not on there.
Okay, the other question, the question that I have is related to eleven G, the school services contract. Um, I just wanted to ask, I know that there's a couple of uh board members who um. Were able to review this and and or ask questions, I just wanted to make sure that. Whether or not those comments were what they were, and whether or not they were addressed through this new con- contract that's being brought forward.
Yeah, so the contract is the contract that was sent out for review by um three board members, and there were some questions that I did take back to school services, school services responded. And um there, that um it it's related to our HR search, and so um the questions were answered and we move forward with the contract.
Okay, so the the they're addressed in this contract. Alright, um, I don't have any more questions, but I do need to have eleven I separated from this.
Alright, and then uh there is a correction to the meeting minutes, uh for the special meeting on eleven A, cuz it says April fifth for our special meeting, and I heard on June fifth. And so um with that correction, and with the exception of eleven I, could I have a motion on a consent?
I may have to approve the consent agenda except for eleven I.
I second.
On a motion by member Pretty and a second by a member Dami to approve the consent agenda, uh as amended with the exception of eleven I. Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? A member Liam is absent, motion carries, uh moving on to eleven I. Yes, I don't know, do you wanna do this one first? Okay, thank you. She's waiting a long time. Eleven I, I, here I have a motion on that one.
I make a motion to approve the contracts.
A second.
Oh, second.
On a motion by member C O C Ola and a second by a member Core to approve eleven I, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Abstention.
And one abstention, uh with member Dami abstaining, a member Liam absent, motion carries, uh and then.
I can stand, I'm gonna calmly answer, Scott, recognizing that I'd like to also speak.
Awesome, so um. So we just now hired a director of transportation, she is in the audience, her name is Julie uh Guerrero, and I just wanna welcome her to the.
I thought she was supposed to hear for your budget, but. I I said a lot of fair.
Um, thank you um board um and admin team for welcoming to Yuba City, I'm very happy to be now be a part of the team. And to represent and to serve the community and the district, the students and staff, so thank you so much, I'm really excited to be here.
We are excited.
People refer to her because I said, oh yeah, I think there'll be like seven burbs.
There were no.
I was trying to.
Yeah, I know. It's seven thirty somewhere else.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you. With that action uh tonight, would I would like to introduce the new principal of Riverbend Elementary School, Eric Winkie. So Eric is a commander base for our district, he has been a teacher, a phenomenal math teacher. Um also a coordinator and assistant principal at Gray Avenue, and now will be meeting school at River Riverbend.
Thank you very much, um for me, it's coming home to Riverbend.
Yeah, that's right.
I I got my first job at Riverbend and worked there for five years. And then uh supported it in pretty much every other role I had, other than teaching at Riverbend.
Yeah, don't forget teaching Nicola Fabulous.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
But I'm really happy to be service capacity and get to know this school.
Congratulations.
With that. I thought they were just here for Scott, but it's. Moving forward to our action items, uh twelve A, uh could I have a motion on twelve A with uh the exception of. Read admission case only of zero one eight.
I need a motion to accept as a stance, uh with the exception of R dash zero one eight, oh second.
On a motion by member Dami and a second by member Core, uh to approve this discussion closed session with the exception of R dash zero one eight, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, or you know, the motion carries, uh could I have a motion on uh read admission case zero one eight?
Um, I need to motion to approve. The recommendation, yes, I'll second.
On a motion by member Dami and a second by member Pretty to uh approve as discussing closed session, R dash zero one eight, uh could I have a roll call vote on that one more?
Yes.
Remember C O C Ola?
Nay.
Remember Dami?
Yes.
Remember Car?
No.
Remember Pretty?
Yes.
Remember Colty?
Yes.
And President Roscoe?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's on you, she knows me.
Thank you, motion carries, sorry, just spaced out a little bit. Um, moving forward to twelve B, first of tables for shade structure based project.
So I think that um the standard report is fairly straightforward, but essentially, we are, um this is uh shade structures, um. Canopies, uh we're working on uh Goodville, King Avenue, Yuba City High School, Park Avenue, and Riverbend.
Have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so I did see that you guys have those select uh schools, and I know we're doing shade structures at every single school. Um, I know with the playground and playground equipment and stuff, there is uh delays with regards to supply chains and and whatnot. Sorry?
Weather.
Uh huh, um, and then I know we've had some delays with the shade structures in general too. Um, my question is, would it be uh? Would it be important for us to include those other schools that eventually will get the shade structures up and all that? And get all the material in. I don't know what the what timeline is, it might be that you're having the next schools come in, that's what's working or whatnot, but would it be? Permanent, that's kind of what it.
I mean, I think we, you know, we're tidying them out as as totally as for our our capacity to get these done, so um. You know, kind of.
Good.
So I have a couple of questions with regards to the quantropy. So I've been, I've seen the shade structures, some, so like for example, I see the quantity amounts. I also had a question in regards to why Gray Avenue was listed on the consent agenda, and these are on the action agenda. Uh why that one was separated out, um and then also the um the quantity, was that a park planet deciding?
No, so so yeah, so Mark, our director of uh maintenance facilities, Mark Button, works with the principals to identify the needs there, and so. Um, you know, that it it's determined through that process.
Okay. And the um and the rate of eleven hundred sixty eight dollars per table, it's portable, is it designed to withstand the outdoor elements, or is it?
They talked about the the consent agenda, agenda.
No, this is utterly just square portable table with four attached feet, rounded, are we not on the timeframe?
Yes, sir, yep. Uh so I'll probably defer to uh this front, if we can recognize him to answer this part of the question.
Can you read that question, please?
Um, so my question is with regards to uh um. The, I guess the quantity question, Viden's or the principal signed up on each site administrator, I guess my question is, looking at the amount plus the fact that these are. Nearly twelve hundred dollars a piece per table, so there, and you know. One site ordering twenty two, the other seventeen, which I love outdoor tables, it's great, I'm just curious, especially since we didn't take this out to bid, doesn't look like we shopped it. But these can be outside and withstand the elements to that.
So these have been out to bid.
Oh, they have, because.
Well, the, when we say shop it, we actually did do a prepared pricing, but we did use a state price agreement.
Which is a bid.
And with the bid process.
This process.
Okay.
But what these are is, these are tables that have been historically used in the district, and they're metal table with bottom coating. So they do withstand weather, and they're durable tables.
Okay. Okay.
And we've recently even had students stack them up on each other and would be able to put them back down, and they're solid tables. So they, we've had successful uh success in passing these tables.
Okay. And and then why was there one site that was separated from the?
Yeah, so what happened is, we, when the original orders, we had Gray Avenue, all the sites were really based on how much space was covered. We got the tables based on how much space would be covered. On Gray Avenue, they wanted additional tables because they have a concrete space between the shade structure and the motor lathe. So they wanted that, principal actually wanted to add additional tables in that open space.
Okay, that's not covered.
That's not covered, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so, so these, sorry, Mr. Button, these ones that are here are the like Verbiut Vista and Piaview, Riverbend, all those other schools that are listed as park planets. Those are, uh they've ordered just enough to sit underneath the canopies, or?
That was the intent, right, just have underneath the canopies.
Okay.
The Gray Avenue is an exception because they they're really tight on space.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and that's why we kind of expanded that seating into the open area.
I think that's great, I think that would be great even for the other schools, um so I guess I would. I mean, I'm okay with this, but I uh maybe I can touch base with you guys, I'd just like to see why. A eleven were ordered for Riverbend as opposed to twenty two or seventeen for the others, is it a smaller structure?
Yeah, the structures are different, and some and some sites actually, Riverbend exists two structures.
Uh huh. I know, they have that one that's already.
Yeah, so there's there's different sizes, different structures, uh Verbiut Vista has actually two smaller structures, because that's all that site can fit.
Uh huh.
So it is still based on size of its cover, but this, there is a range in the size of the shade structure, they're all not a identical.
And. And uh point of clarification, you may not know this, and it's okay, the Riverbend structure that's going in, is that. Uh immediately east of the, like right outside of the multipurpose room?
Yes, it's supposed to be helping with the shade, the stage that's on the side there.
Okay.
So when you open it up, we're actually moving that burn back.
Right, I see.
To actually have the room for the shade structure, and then that way, that could be used incorporated into the stage.
I have one more question. Um, I couldn't help but notice, no matter how many tables were ordered, each site is being charged eight thousand two hundred dollars for grades. Whether it's twenty two tables or eleven tables.
Well, that, what happened was, it's still our general funding, what happened is that they're just coming in a truckload. And they just put that shipping out side by, it's just easier, that's all it was.
So.
We can redistribute that if that's preference.
Doesn't, it's all coming out of one.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I was just doing the percentage as a ratio, it's like for um. For uh Verbiut Vista.
But I think what what Mark's saying is it's one shipment, right?
Yeah, correct, well, I mean.
So then you're saying eight thousand two hundred times forty five thousand.
So you could, you could take that all all off of all the sites and just put on the bottom, this is shipment for all.
Yeah.
It's forty thousand dollars to ship these tables.
Where they coming from?
Yeah, they're they're. Yeah, they're they're yeah, they're it's it's uh they're coming out summers. So and you'd think the amount of quantity we got several truckloads, the tables coming in.
It's coming out of where?
Summer.
On down.
On summers.
But where are they being shipped from? I think River Plant's in Red Lobster California.
Yeah, that's the office. That's not where the tables from.
Why?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just, okay. It blows it blows my mind how much you pay for things when you have like glimpses into like a different world, like the truck industry, you know, and I mean it's like I I think forty-five thousand dollars or forty thousand plus, it's like
Yeah, it's like
truck, normal truck drivers would be like ecstatic. They'll do like twenty loads for you for that price. Do you know what I mean?
But that's also you gotta uh consider loading fees and unloaded fees and everything else is part of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the national purchasing partners contract is something that is nationally negotiated for the all Department of Ed?
Correct. What what there's several sources and we see that primarily. And what it is is they go out and bid it out and it helps us out tremendously. And they get competitive bids and then we can use that.
Right. Right.
And it saves the formal bid process going through it. So and it is competitive.
It is a formal bid process that saves us.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
If there are no further questions, can I have a motion on twelve B?
I make a motion to approve twelve B. One second.
On a motion by member C O C O L and a second by member Domi to approve twelve B, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Um all those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh twelve C, uh there are no other questions?
Second.
Okay.
So there's one of them, let me find it. Uh it says for number two, um it says the bid documents didn't show that the cabling installation for the P A s- speaker and data jacks to the structure, um was that is that like the maps or something that didn't?
So so I will tell you, if I get these questions to the grant, I will have the answer for you, but I don't think, but um
No worries. I appreciate you here. You're the reason, thank you. And if you can't answer them, that's okay.
Yeah, I can answer.
Answering the big man.
So what happened when they did the original design documents, we used an architect, the design documents go through D S A. And then that initially the intercom systems were not included in the design. So this was a change order to include those into project. Obviously, we need to have that part of the work.
Yeah.
And this and line two, that twenty-five thousand dollars is taken with all six sites.
Oh, okay.
So that's why it seems high, but it's really less than that when you consider it's all six sites.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That that brings a lot of
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. Next question. And that is with regards to item three, four, five, six, and seven, which is not across all sites.
Correct.
Tell me about this unsuitable soil conditions.
The problem that was actually due to weather and what happens when they start excavating the sites.
Okay.
They come down a certain level and try to get stable soils. We have to meet a compaction rate of ninety-five percent. Or we can't put the concrete uh on, we can't put the concrete slab on the soils.
You cut it one back.
So when you get down, we test the soils when it's excavated out. And some of that, we did have some bad weather coming in and there's the soils, when they obviously get more water on them, they're less stable. So to to mitigate that, what they actually have to do, so they're coming down eight inches. They have to actually overexcavate maybe another eight inches, so removing another eight inches of material. And then when that material comes out, you got to throw in a material that actually is compatible, usually gravel. You know, three quarter miles gravel. And then you put in a fabric that helps distribute the weight. And then so then you add that, then you put back in the what was in the contract was that first eight inches. That other eight inches is actually to make sure this the soils do make com- compaction. By doing that, by mitigating soils, we actually achieve the compaction rates.
And generally speaking, when you go, like depending on what your compaction rate is, the city or county you've gone through that, they'll dictate how much more compaction you needed and your engineer will have to come in and tell you how much more you're gonna dig in.
Yeah, and our process is actually through the D S A.
Okay.
And we use D S A for our governing agency for building construction authority. And we do have a D S A inspector that we end up hiring at the third party. And we also have a testing agency, which is Young Doll. Young Doll actually comes out and does the testing, D S A does verify the testing to make sure they're accurate. And at that point, we have to make a decision, do we mitigate the soils or do we walk away and tell it to dry out? And even with the changes, it's much cheaper to mitigate it on site as opposed to waiting another six, eight months to dry out.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you.
There are no further questions? Can I have a motion on twelve C?
I'm going to approve twelve C, second.
On a motion by member Pretty and a second by member Domi to approve twelve C, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Twelve D, are there any questions? If not, can I have a motion on twelve B?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On a motion by member C O C O L and a second by member Domi to approve twelve B, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Twelve E, are there any questions?
I have no, I have no comment.
Uh, can I have a motion on twelve D?
The motion approved. One second.
On a motion by member Domi and a second by member Pretty to approve twelve E, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Are there any committees for? I think so. Okay, fine. I have the written communications from the public, uh Mercedes is not here, so I guess.
Good evening, board members.
Good afternoon.
And anybody still out there, the lukens, president of the U of City Teachers Association. Um I recognize only and so the however, I got a couple of up things I'd like to share. Um with nice board action, uh you've hired fifteen new certificated uh Y C T A bargaining unit members. Um and accepted the resignation of three and the retirement of Kathy Palazias. Kathy Palazias is a kindergarten teacher at River Bend. Um and she will be greatly missed in her enthusiasm for kindergarten students. Um it is uh gratifying to see that the number of new hires exceeds the attrition tonight. So we're making progress towards um fully staffing and hope that um there's lots more to come as we move forward um in this time of uh teacher shortages. Couple of other items I'd like to address is um that in tonight's board action. Um you considered the budget and uh I appreciate uh the thoroughness of uh Mr. Bentley's report. That's why I had no questions because as I reviewed it, all the questions I was going to ask, you thoroughly covered, so thank you very much. Um although it is absent a pretty significant piece of information as we wait for the A V twelve hundred um and the impacts on the budget. So I look forward to hearing that update. However, I will not be here in person to listen, nor might I even listen perhaps, then I'll be in Hawaii, so it's not true, I'll be listening, sorry. I'll do it afterwards. Um and then uh as uh the the uh piece that you will consider next is the tentative agreement with Y C T A. Tonight, you acted on several M O Us, um including ones that will support teachers to complete the coursework for a single subject credentials in those highly needed areas that'll support teachers in subbing on their uh preps in this continuing shortage of teacher substitutes. Uh that'll um assure that all counselors work the extra five days, whether they're in elementary or middle school. So we made significant progress in your board action tonight and in the near future, I hope that you will be approving the T A. Y C T A ratified our T A on the very last page. Um so there were some happy folks that gathered at U of City High School to ratify our tentative agreement. Um our um our members were happy to uh ratify an eleven and a half percent salary increase um with some significant retroactive pay. Uh in addition to that, that agreement includes collaboration every Wednesday for sixty minutes. Um it is our hope that in that collaboration time, as professionals are working together every week, that we can truly focus on um some areas of uh growth and improvement in our services to students. Key in our areas to address are things like our absenteeism. You looked at um R A D A. Um you looked at it in the L cap as well as in the budget, the impacts on money as well as education with our chronic absenteeism and ninety-two percent R A D A and the chronic absenteeism at twenty percent. Um we've got some serious issues to address. Along with that absenteeism is how do we improve student engagement? Um it it's not enough to just get them in the room. We've got to get them engaged and actively um participating in their learning. Uh we need to address student and staff safety. Um and we need to address parent and community engagement. Um we've got an opportunity to engage our parents in a way that makes them more fully partners in our educational experience. Uh in addition to uh the work we will do on in collaboration in the future, by the way, those aren't all items for collaboration. There is items that we all need to collaborate on to improve. Um you also improved stipends for athletics as well as other extra work. So that will help to um attract uh coaches for U of City Unified Students. Um and uh in addition to that, I'm gonna uh oh, I'm I'm excited to uh hear that we have, looks like we're gonna pull it off on our P D day on uh August fourth. Um Dorina and I have talked for a number of years about what a great opportunity it would be to get all of us together in one place. So I'm excited to have heard from uh Tino that uh our P D day on August fourth will include a keynote speaker with classified and certificate at all the same rooms. It's gonna be a crowded room at the M P um at the gym at uh River Valley. Um but it's exciting to all gather together to hear a common message, so we look forward to that. Um and then I'd like to address a meeting I attend uh well zoomed in to attend today. Um the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools. Um this board took action based on the recommendation of staff to not approve P C I um charter here in U of City Unified. I'd like to thank the U of City um Unified Staff as well as this board for all your due diligence in considering that charter. Staff prepared a detailed and thorough analysis of their um report on that charter. I believe this board and staff were um operated with all due diligence to carefully consider that charter and what was in the best interest of our students, our community, and our schools. So I just want to thank you for the thoroughness of that. Um as I listened to the charter, that charter has appealed it to C T E, C D E um to take it to the Advisory Commission on uh to get another hearing. And I think it is through the due diligence of this group that um I hope that your actions will be supported. So thank you for that action and your thoroughness, both staff and this board in your consideration of that charter option. And um with that, I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Um other comments from board members wanted to make before we adjourned?
I have a comment. Um I have a comment and a request. Um one uh one thing that I've been thinking about was central gate there and we're gonna do with it. Um so maybe, you know, in the future board meeting soon, we can discuss what might happen or what the plans are. Um and then the comment that I had, which kind of sort of is a request to um just on the heel of the two-year contract that we were able to negotiate um and it sounds like there's a lot of positivity around there and the P Ds and and whatnot. Um something that I've thought about a lot um is I'd like to talk about um equity and equality when it comes to different school sites. Um for example, like relating to classroom budgets, it's like things that uh you know, teachers can spend their money on. Uh maybe if we can get a report or something, I'd really like to to see where we're at with that.
Any other board member comments? I see there's some comments. With that, I will re adjourn the meeting closed session.
Thank you. We have a bunch.